There we go. Welcome, everyone. It's 12:05, so we are going to get started. Thanks for waiting for us. And as people trickle in, that's awesome. So let me just start with myself. So thank you so much for being here. And I am, you know, my name is Ada Dorch. I'm the Director of Development and Advocacy with Impact Northwest. I'm moderating today's session with our Meet the Candidates running for City Council District One. So we'll see them here. There's four of us, four of them joining today. So that's Candace, Jamie, Steph, and Timor. And this session is hosted by a number of Portland-area nonprofits doing great work in the community. Several of them on the call right now. So hello, and thank you for being here. I am going to multitask and show my screen so you can see the logos of everyone. There we go. Hopefully you see that. So yes, so the number of nonprofits are Portland Tenants United, Blanchet House, SEI, Northwest Pilot Project, Path Home, Transition Projects, Our Just Future, William Temple House, the Welcome Home Coalition, and then of course, Impact Northwest. So kind of like what we've always done in these Meet the Candidates, it's important for us to kind of set the scene. So as 501(c)(3) nonprofits, we do not endorse any candidate. We do feel that civic engagement in advocating for the communities where we work is important. And so that's why we're really grateful to have these sessions and really grateful for the candidates to participate. So a little bit about Impact Northwest. We have a two-pronged advocacy approach. And my colleague Sophia can add that. A link about our chat in the chat about our Homesys Prevention Strategy. It talks a little bit about that. And that's definitely for you as well, for the candidates to read that and kind of look at what that strategy looks like for Impact Northwest. So together with our partners, we want to stress the importance of housing plus services as a solution to addressing the housing crisis and to contract modernization that revamps the way the public sector contracts with nonprofits to provide housing services. So that's a big two-part advocacy effort that we have and that Homesys Prevention Strategy outlines it a little bit more in detail for you. So it'll be very interesting. Before we get started and set the ground scenes, the ground rules, sorry. So that's the next slide. And here they are. Let me read them for you. "All participants are treated with respect and treat others with respect." We have the microphones off, but during the Q and A, we'll definitely unmute participants for the questions that you want to ask the candidates. And then during that Q and A, you can use the chat for the questions or you can raise your virtual hand and I will do my best to see everyone's hand and get you, unmute you and get your questions asked for you. And you've noticed that the session is recorded. So even though we are a small and mighty group on the call today, this is definitely going to be available on the Impact Northwest website and shared a little bit more publicly with our supporters and networks so that others can see it as well. So let me stop share. There we go. And each candidate will have up to five minutes to speak and then that remaining time will be the Q and A portion. So with that, I would like to welcome everyone and I will call on each to speak in the order of Candace, Jamie, Steph, and Timor. They have a heads up, so they know what's coming. So with that, thank you so much Candace for joining and I would like to pass it to you for your five minutes.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Very good to see all of you and happy to see these familiar faces in the movement. So glad to be here. I'm Candace Avalos. My pronouns are she/her, obviously running to represent District One. About me, I am a first-generation American. I'm daughter to Guatemalan immigrants and Black Americans from Southern Virginia. And I started the first decade of my career as an educator, teaching English as a second language at, in the high school level. And then I worked at Portland State University for eight years, working with young leaders, teaching them about civic engagement and leadership. And now serve as the Executive Director of Verde, which is an environmental justice nonprofit. We work to build environmental wealth for low-income and BIPOC communities throughout Portland and Oregon. I know we are all here understanding very well that we have a lot of challenges facing Portland, but we also have a lot of opportunities. And as a longtime civic leader, I have shown my love for this city by advocating to make it better. And I have been working with a variety of stakeholders over many years to get things done, whether that is being on the Charter Commission to help envision this new form of government, excuse me, serving as a leader in the police accountability space for several years and helping to usher in that new, also another measure on police accountability. And just being in community as a board member of Street Roots, a board member of Coalition of Communities of Color, founding board member of Portland Neighbors Welcome. So the issues of housing and homelessness in particular are something that I've been really invested in. And so I'm really eager to bring my policy expertise and my community-minded leadership to City Hall. As far as, you know, what my platform is about, definitely will, we can go into that in the Q and A, but high-level values, I believe that solutions that address the root cause and are grounded in our shared values are what we need to be aiming for. I believe in a policy agenda that can correct the historic injustices and failed promises, especially for East Portland. And I believe that our city is safest when our communities are resourced. But I also believe in Portland and I believe in its promise and opportunity and I'm running to turn all of these values into political action. East Portland has long felt left out of the city's vision for progress and I'm hoping to change that as a champion. So I hope you will join me and happy to expand more on my platform points in the Q and A. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much and thanks for being within the time. That's part of it. So thank you so much. I will pass it to Jamie. Jamie, go ahead.
Great. Thank you. Thank you guys all so much for spending your lunchtime here and thanks for the invite. I am Jamie Dunphy. I'm a longtime public servant. I've been in public service in this community in East Portland for over 20 years. I live in the Park Rose neighborhood with my, my wife and daughter and our two dogs, our two goats, our four chickens and our 16-year-old cat. I am running for City Council specifically because I think that this new system of government has a real potential to fix a lot of the things that are wrong with our city and a lot of the stupid things that have been going on with the city for a very long time. But I also recognize that our community has a really long track record of voting for things that sound really great and then falling completely flat on our implementation. And I think that I might have some relevant experience and skills, both in this community and in the halls of government, to make sure that we can actually meaningfully deliver on the result of what these, what the voters wanted out of this new form of government. I started my career in East Portland. I was working in the David Douglas School District doing gang prevention in a middle school for 14-year-olds. I wanted to be a teacher. That was always my goal. But I, I saw the ways that the education system was just, was failing some of the children and the people who needed it the most and I just couldn't, I wasn't brave enough to dedicate my life to that. I instead changed my major in college and decided to try and fix the system as much as I could. I spent 10 years after college working for two of our region's best elected officials, in my opinion. I spent five years working for US Senator Jeff Merkley, where I was working on education, housing, and social security. I was helping folks who were trying to apply for disability benefits and they were sick but not sick enough and poor but not poor enough. I helped, I actually started my job with the Senator's Office because they, we were in the middle of the housing crisis. This is 2010, 2011 and they literally created a job for me just to do the administrative paperwork on the number of people who were facing foreclosure. Just so I, my job was just to input their, their, their privacy releases all day. It was a catastrophic time and it has fundamentally shaped my, my worldview on public policy. Working for Senator Merkley was great. Working for Congress is terrible. I spent the next five years working for Portland City Commissioner Nick Fish and I was his Senior Policy Director for the last five years of Nick's life. Nick was the, was the City Commissioner who passed away from stomach cancer in January of 2020. I was responsible for anything that the Commissioner needed to vote on in City Hall, in, as a City Councilor, not his two bureaus. So I spent years working deep in the bowels of city government, understanding zoning and permitting and housing and helped implement the city's public, permanent supportive housing policy. Nick Fish, as you will also remember, is the City Commissioner who actually started the city's housing bureau. I learned a lot from how to approach housing from both Jeff and Nick. When Nick passed away, I was temporarily assigned to Mayor Ted Wheeler's office and decided pretty quickly that was not a good fit for me. And I've spent the last four years working for the American Cancer Society. I am the statewide lobbyist for the American Cancer Society, primarily focusing on access to affordable healthcare and tobacco control, trying to get rid of the flavored, you know, bubblegum-flavored vapes that our middle schoolers love the most. I thought that my time in public service was done with Nick's death, but I really, in watching the process unfold, I feel like I have some unique skills that will be really helpful to making sure that when we get into City Hall, especially representing East Portland, that this new form of government is able to hit the ground running and meaningfully deliver results quickly. So that is my, my entire thesis for why I want to run and why I want to get in and be helpful. Because this place is amazing. Portland is wonderful, but we, we need some quick leadership. I will stop talking there. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jamie. And again, thanks for staying in the time. All right. Steph, I'm going to pass to you, please.
Thank you so much for having me. This is a wonderful group to be with at a lunchtime hour. My name is Steph Rouse. She Bay. I grew up in Park Rose. I live in Lentz. I've lived east of 82nd Avenue the majority of my life. I graduated from Park Rose High School, Joe Bronco. I've been a small business owner and a nonprofit leader, community organizer, and a teacher. And I grew up in a working-class family. My mom has been a critical care nurse for her entire career and my dad was many things, including an auto mechanic. And they instilled in me the importance of having tough conversations with honesty, kindness, and a goal towards finding the best path forward when there are no easy solutions. And actually, I'd like to just pause there and appreciate everyone in this room because I feel like I see a number of folks that I've been involved with, engaged with on housing policies in particular over the last several years and, and it means a lot. Like there have been, this has been a really difficult several years and no one knows that better than y'all. And, and so one thing that I'm really hopeful for, if I'm lucky enough, fortunate enough to be seated on City Council, is to work with you to, to find like what, what are you seeing on the ground? How do we develop an adaptive strategy so that we can house all of our neighbors? And, and I think, and I'll just speak a little bit more in Q and A because in 10 minutes, actually, I have to go to a planning commission meeting, which is why, you know, welcome from PSU. And as you were talking about nonprofits, I've served, I was the first Executive Director of Oregon Box. That's not a coincidence, having grown up in East Portland because just the lack of walkable infrastructure and the fact that 60% of our high-crash corridors, the vast majority of our pedestrian inju, serious injuries and deaths happen east of 82nd Avenue. And that is by design and that is very specifically targeting through environmental design lower-income families and brown and black communities. And, and I also, when I moved back to Lentz, about over 10 years ago, I became the first, joined with the Jade District on, as the Policy and Equities Subcommittee Co-Chair and have served on the Planning Commission over the last five years because I feel like that is a love letter to Portland. And, and through all of those conversations and experiences, I'll just share that the not our government's relationship to nonprofits, I think, really needs to shift. One thing that we, I've spoken with, I think with a couple of you is, and is that we basically use nonprofits as lending institutions, you know, that grants are reimbursement-based primarily. And that, that deeply impacts our nonprofits on who we depend on. For so much of our housing provision and service provision, that, that it inhibits your ability to, to develop your capacity, develop your infrastructure and to have a nourishing relationship with your staff. The other is procurement and I think that that's something that we really need to talk about as a city and, and large scale as government. Like how do we get procurement to, to happen in a more reasonable timeframe? So you don't have like nine months of waiting for a contract, so you have to do a year's worth of work in three months. So I'm really excited about relentlessly pursuing solutions that are not sexy at all to actually help us be all on the same team because we all are. And, and I absolutely include all of, all of the colleague candidates. I just want to appreciate in this moment because we don't have time for it usually, but Candace, Jamie, and Timor, just having been in these spaces with you has just developed my appreciation for each of you and I'm just so grateful to be in this world with you. And with that, Timor, I'll let you, you continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for passing it off. Go ahead, Timor.
Cool. Thank you for the opportunity, Timor Ender, he/him pronouns. I'll start. My housing journey began, I helped on the City of Raleigh, North Carolina's 2011 Transportation Affordable Housing Bond Referendum and really enjoyed that opportunity. It passed with 64% of, 69% of the vote, which was the largest in the city's history at that time. I had the privilege of biking across America twice with a nonprofit called Bike and Build, where we slept in churches and biked about 70 miles a day and relied on the generosity of strangers. And along the way, what we did was actually build houses with habitat, whatever stage they were in at that community at that time. And so that also shaped my perspective of housing and housing issues, not just in urban areas, but also rural areas and suburban areas. And allowed me to have a greater understanding of some of the housing challenges. That was a very important part of my life. And then the second time I finished my bike ride was in Portland, in Cannon Beach, and we came through Portland. And so ultimately, I looked for a way to get back to Portland pretty soon after. Had the privilege of, I applied to a bunch of law schools, didn't get in. And so I did my first year of law school in San Diego and then ultimately was able to transfer into Lewis and Clark. After law school, I was, had the privilege of working with Congressman Blumanhour's Office and the Port of Portland, the Federal Transit Administration, and ultimately, local government with Commissioner Novak's Office. In that capacity, I was able to help launch the Bike Share Program and help launch fixed speed safety cameras and the Fixing Our Streets Program, the Tencent Local Gas Tax. And really had the opportunity to work with community-based organizations and elevate the needs of East Portland as articulated through community-based planning efforts such as East Portland in Motion. And me as a project manager managing roughly around $30 million of state, local, and federal funding sources, ensuring that, you know, the city budgets we were doing met what community members in East Portland said was their priority. And so that was a tremendous privilege and had the opportunity to work with neighborhood groups, community organizations, residents, and, and people to kind of shape their built environment in the way they were saying how they wanted it to be shaped. Little bit about me, I'm a parent of three kids, including, as of this past February, a child in the foster care system, which has brought kind of an increased awareness to me about some of the resources and support systems that are needed, that I had not previously been exposed to as a parent of two other kids who were not neurodivergent. And so that's been an eye-opening experience of navigating some of those challenges. In terms of why I chose to run, a few reasons. One is I felt a lot of perspectives were missing from local government, whether that is parents of young kids, working families, people who have experienced working in local government, and also people who live in areas of high rates of gun violence and traffic crashes, that oftentimes this urgency around these issues gets lost. And not everyone really has the opportunity to drop what they're doing and spend 15 months of their life campaigning for public office or doing that on top of the existing things they're doing. So shout out to these great candidates who have also managed to, to make that work. But that was something I realized I was able to do and I felt like there was no, you know, I could do that and feel confident about that decision. And so we were able to do that. And the other thing I'll say too is what drives me to run is, is health. And so East Portlanders have a life expectancy 10 years less than people living west of 82nd Avenue. This is due to higher rates of gun violence and traffic crashes and things like that. And so my overall lens for how I view policy is through a health equity lens and every budget and policy decision that I make is going to be related to how do we increase East Portland's life expectancy and reduce those disparities? And housing is a very key, central part of that. So I will pause there. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Timor, and thank you, everyone. So now I will open it up for Q and A. So if you have a question for the candidates, please put it in the chat or raise your hand and I will unmute you. I also have a few questions that were asked in previous sessions that I can fill the time with if nobody feels brave to go first, but I know there's some questions out there. So give it a second. All right, Andy, I thought you might be the brave one. Go ahead.
Well, maybe as, as I'm sitting in East Portland, so here in Hazelwood. We'll welcome all of you and thank you all for spending some time with us. I've no, gotten to know, I think, most of you through the years. So I, I guess my question is, is really about East Portland and what's your vision? I feel like Portland has, on the one hand, done this wonderful job of placemaking viewed through a traditional lens. But if you put the word inclusive in front of placemaking, we've done a terrible job. Most of our placemaking has dispossessed a lot of people of their homes. Many of those folks over the last few decades have moved to East Portland. And I'm not going to say it's a blank slate because it really, there's lots of wonderful neighborhoods and nicks and crannies here. But I, I do think we've been with three new TIF districts coming. Super long question. Sorry. I'm not running. You are. My, my, I guess my, my question to you is, what's your vision? How, how will these new resources build toward an inclusive vision in, through your, through your, through your lens?
I was going to suggest maybe Steph go first since you have to leave.
Exactly. Thank you.
I wanted you to have a chance to answer.
Oh, you're so wonderful. Thank you. And I'm looking forward to the recording to, to hear all of your brilliance in the, the second half. Ironically, perhaps, going in two minutes, we are talking about the East Portland Tax Increment Finance Districts as well as the Central and passing that forward to, to the city. I will say one thing that has come up. I think the short answer to a very big and important question is co-creation and self-determination have been two things that have just been, just so deeply lacking. I think that a lot of the investments that have happened in East Portland, it feels like it's happened to East Portlanders. And I think the, the, what is critical and what we have been talking about in, in terms of TIF districts and are looking to, you know, Cully as a, as a model for, you know, early returns, like how can we shift the narrative? Like what does, what does community-based governance look like? And how can this new form of government ensure that counselors, the three counselors in district are basically, you know, constituent services and are lifting up the voices and ensuring that we're more of a conduit and a convenor as opposed to a prescription-based model, which is, I think, how a lot of East Portland has experienced local government? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steph. Who would like to go next? I won't call on you. I'll let you.
I can go next. Yeah, definitely a big and important question. I like that framing, Steph. I, I think that, I'll start by telling you a quick story about this morning. This morning I was on Zoom with a, the City Auditor's Office and they are doing an audit about climate justice. Essentially, they want to understand how do community-based organizations like Verde interact with the city? How do we see our partnerships, et cetera? Unfortunately for them, I didn't have great news to share. And I think that a lot of us in this room who work in these, these organizations that the city really needs to rely on for partnership in order to move our goals forward, they have just notoriously been bad about that. Now, layer on top of that, East Portland, a part of town that has also historically been unheard. People don't knock on the doors in East Portland. People don't care what East Portlanders think. And so it's hard to see how anything that the city is doing for East Portland really truly involves East Portland. At this point, I don't know that they've really done the work to involve all of the communities, the people, the organizations, to the process of envisioning what East Portland needs to thrive, right? And so I think that this opportunity for, you know, having a district, having representatives, you know, specifically from our neighborhoods, speak on our issues is going to be a big shift. It's going to take time. It's going to take leadership, right? It's, we, at the end of the day, we're three out of 12 votes in East Portland and yet we are a part of town that has been historically under-invested in. And so we're going to really have to work together, I think, as the East Portland representatives to do exactly what you said in your question, the, the equity piece, right? Because equity is about meeting the need that has been long-forgotten, ensuring that the investments are going in places where they're going to have the best, biggest impact and that we're bringing community along in those investments. So, you know, my vision for how to do that, I think, is leaning on the relationships that I've already built across the city. And I see that in, as, in, one of the questions in there that we'll answer later is about like the mayor, right? And I feel like our relationships with the community groups and, and the combination of working with the mayor to execute is how we're going to accomplish what East Portland needs. Lastly, I'll just say, you know, I was knocking doors with some, you know, another nonprofit leader and he came up to me after and he said, "The gentrification is already happening." And that was really upsetting to hear and to think about. I've been reflecting on that. There are a lot of homes that we're knocking on that, that they're empty. And we're seeing a shift already in who is moving into East Portland, who has capacity to. And we're already seeing a pushing of our communities out. And, you know, this is something that we talk about at Verde because that's essentially our whole goal with our Living Cully Coalition. And the fact, you know, we created the Living Cully Tax Increment Financing District, a community-led district, with the intention of how do we make sure that these investments to our communities don't push them out? You know, when Verde advocated for Cully Park, that was a big part of the discussion because it's like, okay, this is a, a part of town that is just lacking in natural resources and green spaces. But when we add these things, it increases property values, it increases, you know, attraction to a space and then people that those, that park was built for will get pushed out. And so that's something that I'm very, you know, attuned to and it's something that I think the three of us on council are going to need to have a, a close eye on because unfortunately, I'm already seeing that begin. And as we're talking about the TIF districts and we're talking about how do we bring investments into East Portland, we have to balance that with ensuring that the people that they're meant for actually get to live in the, the places that we're investing. So that's kind of my big-picture vision, but I think ultimately my answer is about relationships, partnerships, and leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Candace. Jamie or Timor, one of you like to go next? You have a couple minutes.
Okay, I can go next. Cool. Thanks, Jamie. So I'll just start by saying, I never want to have to guess what my community needs. And so this is why I'm a big proponent of things like participatory budgeting, the East Portland in Motion, really providing the capacity and resources for communities to kind of self-determine. And, and then my job is ultimately to fight for those resources, you know, having the community decide and, and coalesce around ideas. A good example, this is the East Portland in Motion where we, you know, community prioritized projects. That was a council-adopted list. And then there were people in city government, myself included, who then matched, okay, for these projects, we're going to apply for grants for these projects, we're going to use local money. And out of that process, the highest priority was getting Powell addressed, Outer Powell, and, and that led to millions of dollars of infrastructure investments that some have happened and some are actively under construction now. I think East Portland, out of all the council districts, has the most opportunity in terms of community development and, and building up and, and, you know, land use. I, in terms of the mechanics and specific things that I'm looking for is going to be things like street lighting, transit-oriented development, getting bus rapid transit on our arterials to save families' time and money. Making sure we're doing comprehensive gun violence prevention programs. So a voluntary gun buyback program, place-based intervention such as street lighting. A lot of, a lot of the built environment things that affect health and health outcomes are things that I'm kind of focused on. And then for, there's, there's been a lot of kind of frustration around the old Kmart site at 122nd and Sandy. And we just can't let things like that happen again. So, you know, making sure our zoning code is in service to the outcomes and goals that we want to see as a community. And not having, you know, things that we didn't ask for being essentially permanently built and shaping our built environment and, and our air quality and our, the safety of our streets. So those are all kind of some of the things I'm thinking of as, you know, in the role of a city council member that is going to be involved in shaping built environment and, and health outcomes and how people experience their neighborhoods.
Thank you, Timor. Jamie, I'll pass to you.
Great. And I, I won't belabor it because my colleagues did a really good job of this, but my, you know, I, I think my view, my vision for the future of East Portland is that this is a safe, clean, welcoming and intentional neighborhood. That our community just more broadly, that a lot of the things that have happened in East Portland have happened to us without any sort of strategic thought or grand vision. And even when those investments do come from City Hall, they do things like plant trees without a plan to water. Or they install protected bike lanes that actually increase the number of pedestrian accidents. I think that the potential for the future of Portland is in East Portland. I think that this is the area that has vacant land. We have 40% of all the kids in the city in East Portland. We have half of all the people of color are in East Portland. And so far, for the most part, there has never been an intentional advocacy or an intentional thought about how this community develops. And I think a lot of that, I think we're going to see pretty dramatically how much the, the way the city of Portland does business changes when there are three dedicated full-time elected officials from East Portland, because I have seen how those city bureaus and how those city elected officials think about sections of the city where they have really never spent any time. I don't think it's going to be something as simple as getting our fair share of transportation dollars or parks dollars, but I think it's going to be a fundamental change in recognizing the, the absolute deficit of investment that has happened in this community for so many years and the overwhelming need for improving connections, like physical connections between sidewalks and continuity and streetlights and paved streets. But also the opportunity to bring housing urgently to vacant lots. Like there's a burned-down laundromat kind of near my house that it could very rapidly be turned into something more. And additionally, I think that just having a responsive government is going to fundamentally change this community. People who live on 145th and Division are not going downtown to try and get a pothole filled. And the idea of actually having a government system that is responsive to your community needs will inherently change the way that our community carries themselves and the pride that they sense in this. Well, it won't inherently. It will do it if we can actually land the plane and do our jobs. And the, the next three, these three city council members are actually able to be successful. So I think that the, the, the opportunity in East Portland is the most exciting city.
Thank you, Jamie. I am going to pivot to a question in the chat and try to ask you to stick to maybe two minutes to answer it if it's okay. I know that's a lot, so I'm not going to be totally strict. But here is the question in the chat. So which mayoral candidate do you think will support your platform for the homeless situation? Or what traits do you want in a mayor to support your homeless plan? I might push back on that one a little bit, flip it and ask, are you endorsing anyone? Are you politically aligned with one mayoral candidate over another as well? So I will pass it to whoever would like to go first. Brave one?
I'll jump in.
All right, there you go.
I will say that specific to homelessness, I have, I, I feel like the only mayoral candidate who has really set a goal is Keith Wilson. I don't know that he will be successful in his goal. That was the same goal that Mayor Ted Wheeler had in 2018. And the situation is certainly harder today, but I really like the idea of defining success early and running full speed at it. And I think that of all the current mayoral candidates, Keith Wilson has been the most clear in what a goal looks like and a path to get there. And I would love to make it so that the next city council is able to help him be successful in his goal of ending unsheltered homeless, or unsheltered neighbors by the, by one year, I believe is what his goal is. So, and I'm not specifically endorsing any candidate.
Cool. I, I guess I can go next because Candace has the best answers. I'll just, I'll start by saying, I, I feel more aligned with Rubio. And I feel that, you know, she has the experience of working in local government and has, you know, a clear-eyed perspective on what it takes to move large bureaucracies and align multimillion-dollar budgets to accomplish goals that, you know, are not going to be accomplished within six months or a year. So I think that is someone who I feel aligned with. In terms of traits I'm looking for is, you know, someone who recognizes that we do not have an unlimited amount of money we spend. And every dollar we're putting into criminalization of what is ultimately systems-level issues is a dollar that we don't have to put into prevention or rehousing or shelter. And so that is, you know, someone who I feel aligned with for those reasons. And then also someone who can look at the big picture that, you know, things like entry side for all, increasing housing capacity, addressing our zoning, making sure people have living wages that they're able to afford, addressing displacement issues. So in terms of like being able to look at the big picture, understand the needs of communities of color, track record of getting things done. For those reasons, I tend to be more aligned with Rubio.
Yeah, I so I have endorsed Carmen Rubio, so I'll start with that. I definitely am aligned with her. I think that she is absolutely demonstrating the kind of leadership I'm looking for in a mayor, which is being really collaborative, open to new solutions, moving systems and bureaucracy on, at a pace that is reasonable, but, you know, still with urgency. And I think that those, those, that leadership style is what we need more than anything. You know, I, I see Keith Wilson's vision and I understand where it's coming from. I just think that he's got his eyes set on the wrong goal. Because you all understand as providers in this industry that that shelter model, it's just has continued to fail us. It is outdated. It doesn't meet the moment. It is not a modern solution for our modern problems. And so I like his energy and his spirit and I respect that he has really zeroed in on what all Portlanders agree is the number one thing we need to address, 100%. And I support anybody that has a passion and is willing to bring people together to solve a problem. I'm just concerned that the goal is not the right goal. If the goal is, let's just have a bunch of beds every night, we're not going to solve homelessness because we know that shelter beds do not solve homelessness. What solves it is putting people on the right path based on what their needs are and working towards increasing the diversity of options, not limiting them. Unfortunately, I don't hear that in his vision. I hear his vision being really narrow. In, you know, let's just have partners and the partners are going to have the shelters and there are so many issues with that. It also just doesn't take into account the various risks that I know you all are managing. I know there's conversation amongst you all as providers that you're having trouble with getting your insurance renewed due to the extreme risk that you're putting under because, you know, you have this blanket solution that's not really going to solve the problem. So I am interested in supporting a mayor that can see through the nuance of it and understand that the diversity of options and the partnerships with our local providers is actually what's going to get, what's going to move the needle. And so that's what I see in Carmen's leadership.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. The next question in the chat is, how do you plan to protect our green spaces from intense development? Let you choose. Who goes first?
Oh, I can kick it off. I mean, I think that, you know, obviously Verde's mission is about ensuring that people have access to green spaces. That is a part of what we believe it builds environmental wealth for our communities, right? I think in East Portland, as we've shared, there are lots of opportunities for development. We have lots of vacant lots. We have lots of vacant green spaces. I would love, for example, to see our, the parks in East Portland have the same amenities that other parks across the city have. I've been doing a Parks Challenge for the last year, just going to all of the different parks, just to understand the infrastructure. Part of it, it started out as like, it's just for fun. I'm just want to touch grass. And then it became, oh, wait, you know, I'm actually noticing some big differences in which neighborhoods, what kinds of amenities their parks have. And that makes a big difference for the feel of the neighborhood, what people, you know, the, the resources that, the richness of the resources that a neighborhood has, right? And so I'm definitely committed to ensuring that all of our green spaces are being developed in a way that makes them multipurpose, multifunctional, gives families ways to interact with those spaces in differently. And then of course, you know, ensuring that vacant lots that we have, I mean, we need to do something with the vacant lots. Not only are they not good for our environment because they increase the heat, the heat islands that we have in East Portland, they're also just not great to look at. And they don't, you know, when you have a lot of vacant lots that have no purpose, that also promotes criminal activities, right? This is part of the whole concept of criminal, crime prevention through environmental design. When you create spaces that have positive intentions, they create a positive community. So all of that is what I will be focusing on and trying to protect green spaces, make them functional and for, you know, better use. And then using, you know, vacant lots and parking lots and all of that and turning it into something more useful like housing, like parks.
Thank you, Candace. Jamie, would you like to go next?
Sure. I, I, I definitely agree with all of what Candace said. I also want to just say that I think that one specific issue that I'm keeping an eye on is our industrial land inventory. The state require, you guys all know the true land use requirements. We are required under law to have a certain amount of industrial land. And the city does not have enough actual industrial land. And so we have zoned certain places like Coalwood Golf Course as industrial. Every time we use a non-industrial use in the industrial lands inventory, that threatens places like Coalwood. It threatens places like Hayden Island, West Hayden Island. It threatens a lot of these places that will be intensely developed. And we know that there are already intense development plans that have been written for how to turn coalwood into a number of warehouses. I'm concerned about that as a, as a big part of it. So I want to make sure that we are more intentional about our industrial lands uses. I think we may need to have some conversations at the state level about the value of an industrial land inventory in the only major metropolitan city in the state. Additionally, I think we need to have some conversations around SDCs. I think that part of our problem is that a lot of our open spaces and green spaces have been neglected with an enormous amount of back maintenance that the city says they simply cannot afford, but they can afford to build new things. And so you see a lot of that disparity. And as, as these public spaces fall into further disrepair, I think that distances the public from these spaces even more. It keeps people away from the community and it threatens it towards more other people thinking of other more intensive uses for it. So I'd say that those are, those are two additional things that I want to make sure we're paying attention to is that our, our zoning code and our land use and what we are permitting in the industrial land inventory is, is true to that. I'll give a specific example. The city council just approved a music venue in the Central East Side, taking away a full acre of industrial land for a commercial use. That means that is another acre that is now at risk elsewhere in the city. Decisions like that are short-sighted and they, they, they don't set us up for the city that we need in the future. And lastly, I will also say that I think we need to have conversations about proximity of these industrial lands. That Kmart site is 10 blocks from my house and it's three blocks from my daughter's school. There is no situation in which a shipping warehouse, freight distribution center would be built two blocks away from Lincoln High School in Southwest Portland. But because this is Park Rose, we are expected to deal with the fact that there will be upwards of 50 to 100 semi-trucks traveling down 122nd every day to get on the freeway. That would never be tolerated in other parts of the community and I look forward to making sure we can actually defend against those kinds of uses in the built environment.
Sure. And I'll just add a few things, you know, we need to be focused on increasing our tree canopy in East Portland. So, you know, we've seen how that has led to dramatic effects in zip codes in East Portland with things like heat domes. Another thing we can do is develop existing parklands, such as Gates Park at 136th and Holgate. The city already owns this. And then, you know, East Portlanders, you know, are living in areas that are park deficient and have greater challenges to accessing parks, whether that's, you know, lack of sidewalks or transit accessibility and things like that. So that's part of my overall vision. Another thing that the city's recently done that I'd love to expand is the Trees in the Curb Zone pilot. So this strategically converts some on-street parking areas to allow for tree planting, which increases shade equity and, and addresses urban heat island effect. The other thing, kind of example that comes to mind for me, because I, I just happen to live near 122nd and Burnside area, and that is a massive Trimate Park and Ride that was designed in a more car-oriented area of the 1950s and 60s. And one fourth of that has been converted into housing. And then now there's a Safe Rest Village there. There's hardly anyone that uses that park and ride for its intended purpose of getting on Trimate. And so we need to look at these spaces that could be used for transit-oriented development, green spaces. These are currently, you know, government-owned land in highly desirable areas that could be put to higher and better uses related to both green space and housing. Now, even though that land is not owned by the city, the city does have an important kind of convening role of addressing some of these issues as it relates to that. But yeah, I pretty much agree with what Candace and Jamie has said as well.
Great. Thank you. Thank you all. So please keep the questions coming or raise your hand. There's another one in the chat. Let's see, I'll go in the order that they came. So then there's two. So the next one is, any ideas on how to alleviate Foster Road east of 92nd in terms of congestion, safety for pedestrians, there are schools nearby, and pollution, gas, diesel fumes are intense? Who would like to go first?
I'd love to jump in if I could, because I actually used to live right there. I used to live on 86th and Nap, which is very close to 92nd and Foster. First of all, the, the promises of the, of the Lentz Town Center never came true. The promises of, of small businesses and walkable neighborhoods and safe communities with, with infrastructure necessary to make it so that people can be safe crossing those huge roads, that never came true. In fact, the crosswalk at 92nd and Foster and Woodstock is still not working properly and it's been multiple years. And when, you know, the new Copper Penny went away, that, everybody thought that was going to be a huge improvement. And now instead we have an urgent care and a planet fitness. That is not the walkable community that Portland promised, which is part of my skepticism towards the new TIF districts broadly. I think that, my, my wife works at Leech Botanical Garden at 122nd and Foster. That stretch from 92nd to 122nd, which passes by the Foster Flood Plane, is a relic of an older city that is industrial. It is not friendly. It is not a good built environment. And it has become a place where has become an attractive place for people who are, are seeking refuge in some capacity. But it means that people are lining the streets with RVs and using the Foster Flood Plane as a place to sleep when it's actually extremely dangerous because it's a flood plain, not a park. There are some opportunities that we could really look at culturally to, to improve this area. For example, trying to look at ways to work with some of these cultural organizations like Zenger Farms, like Leech Botanical Gardens, like some of these places that are customer-focused or are tourism-focused and can actually accommodate additional uses and trying to be, like fix the built environment in a way that actually accommodates some of those. Additionally, I think that a, as we are urgently addressing the homelessness crisis, a lot of those areas are going to be resources that really can be used to welcome community back. The Spring Water Corridor along there and Beggar's Tick are, are two natural areas that need to get the attention that they do. And they're, they're great biking infrastructure and all of those things. If we can actually make sure we are using them the way that they're intended. Yeah, there are, there are spot areas that require some additional attention, like the, the cul-de-sac at 102nd. Like there's just a lot of specific services and built environment changes that need to be done to that area because for so long it was not ever viewed as part of the city. It was simply incorporated later as an afterthought. It was simply incorporated later as an afterthought.
Thank you, Jamie. Candace, would you like to go next?
Sure, yeah, um, and I'm trying to look in the chat at what the question was again, because I think I lost this, lost it. Okay, I see it. Um, okay. Yeah, I mean, I think ultimately this question really centers around East Portland's lack of infrastructure and lack of community involvement in developing infrastructure. That's at the heart of the question, I think. Um, and so, you know, as far as what we, what we should do, um, first and foremost, we need to just have a bigger vision and plan for what are the areas, what are the problem areas of the district that need attention? How are we mapping that out? How are we then, you know, folding that into the larger city's plan? Because of course, you know, the city is not just East Portland. We have to compete for, you know, making sure the resources are equitably placed across the city. Um, and, you know, there are very simple, um, infrastructure things that we should have, right? We all deserve to have sidewalks, we deserve to have paved roads. Um, we deserve to, you know, make sure that as we are building our, um, building out East Portland, that we are mitigating, um, these climate risks like, uh, increasing, you know, air pollution through like, for, for, like the Prologis, um, factory, for example, in Park Rose or Prologis company, I don't know, factory company. Um, and so I think those are the kinds of, these are, these kinds of decisions are getting made without in, input from the community. Um, and so obviously folks are frustrated. And so I think that the first start is like, how are we really engaging the community to discuss what our community needs? Um, and then going from there, I think is, is just at the heart of the question, so. Thanks.
Thank you, Timor. You wanna?
Sure. Yeah, I'll just, uh, just briefly just say, you know, I'm going to be a champion of things like the transportation wallet, which provides, um, free credits for people who use, uh, biking and walking options. Um, and then, um, expanding bike share to the edge of the city. Um, I've signed the pledge to protect the Portland Clean Energy Fund so that those, um, funding sources can be used for their intended purpose. Um, I've had the privilege of, um, managing thirty million dollars of projects like Safe Rouse to School, uh, arterial safety projects, uh, particularly in East Portland. So, uh, this is an issue near and dear to my heart and that I could just probably go on forever about. So, um, I, I'm committed to ensuring our, our kids and our families and everyone who calls East Portland home are safe. Um, and I'm well aware that, uh, roughly a third of Oregonians do not drive due to age, preference, affordability, ability and other factors. So, um, just making sure everyone has ability to, to move around their neighborhoods and their cities is important to me.
Thank you. Right, we have, I think I can get to two more questions if you can be short with your answers, if that's possible. So let me move on to those two and just try to be short and succinct as possible. Thank you. So the first one is around, you know, what we mentioned about that importance around contracting with the nonprofit sector. So the question is updating and improving public sector contracts with nonprofits. Providing housing services to our community is really important, particularly around ensuring our nonprofit employees can earn a living wage. How will you support this initiative? Jamie, uh, Jamie, you want to go first? Kind of saw you nodding.
Sure, I'll just say that I think that a big part of it is, uh, how we contract with administrative oversight or overhead levels within these contracts being predefined, being far too low. We're, uh, asking too much of these nonprofits and their employees and not offering compensation out of the base package, as though that is a, um, a, a, a taboo to try and actually pay the people who are doing this incredible work what they are worth. Um, I've spent my career working in nonprofits and government. My wife actually worked for, uh, Rose CDC for a very long time. Um, I've had an opportunity to see, you know, the incredible work that those folks are doing. Um, but it shouldn't be charity work. It shouldn't be reliant on, uh, uh, do, on serving communities uh, by people who themselves are near, uh, deserving of services. So I think that a big part of it is simply the, uh, the administrative oversight, uh, or the administrative caps on these contracts needs to be increased so that we can pay a decent living minimum wage or, you know, guarantee a living wage for work.
Yeah. I'll just say quickly, one, um, I believe just all the drama around the, um, task sites and having to hire an external company, Urban Alchemy, to come into our community is just like literally so emblematic of the problems that I see in how our city government is partnering with our local providers. I think it's unacceptable that we couldn't find a partner within our own city when we are clearly rich with resources and, and human resources of, you know, folks who have been in our community, understand our communities and could have easily been, you know, should have been taking that contract. So I think that's just one example of that. And I'll just lastly say, you know, I, this year, I raised, um, the wages of my employees. I've been working on it for three years. I've been working to get to the minimum housing wage, which, um, Multnomah County says is twenty-eight eighty-five. Um, I just raised my employees to that after a couple of years of trying to get them up there. And it's already like outdated, right? Like, I know that that number's already gone up. And that's, that minimum housing wage is for a studio apartment. So it's like, it's not even that great, right? So I think we all, I am committed to that. That is a value I deeply hold to ensure that anybody that is working in my business, that they are able to afford a place to live. That should just be the standard and that is the value I'm going to bring. And when I'm analyzing all of these contracts with our partners to ensure that all, anybody that is working in our city to make it better can also afford to live here. Thanks.
Yep, a hundred percent. Um, if you, um, work in the city, you should be able to live here. Um, and this is not just something for, you know, nonprofits, but also public sector. So I'm, you know, even for city employees, uh, there's eight thousand city employees. And, um, some of them, you know, don't even have the ability to afford living in this city. And so, um, one of the things I'm going to be looking for is, um, housing vouchers and public sector union contracts as it relates to nonprofits. Um, you know, that should be built into the formula and, you know, how money is distributed and, um, the procurement rules. Because this is important work and, uh, you know, the future of our city, you know, depends on strong supportive services and strong housing policy. And, you know, the, the people who are doing this need to be appropriately compensated. And, uh, and we just, you know, we just need to say, this is the cost of doing business. This is what it takes. Um, and we, we're going to have to cover some of these, um, uh, building damage issues. Uh, we, we have to, we have to plan for the, the in, increase in insurance costs. And these, these aren't surprises. These are, um, expected technical details that is required in a, uh, housing first and housing with supportive, uh, services pro, uh, approach. This is what it takes to do that. And so we should just be clear-eyed about it and, and, um, make that happen.
Thank you so much and thanks all for your time. I do have one last question, if it's okay, hopefully. Awesome, so the question, it's a good one. So the question is polarization in politics tends to cause paralysis in terms of addressing critical issues. With twelve new council members and a new mayor and likely new county commission that will like, that will likely include a wide range of perspectives on urgency and solutions, how will you work to ensure we do move forward on our critical issues?
I can take this one first. Um, so I had the privilege of working in City Hall for two years. Um, Jamie and I were there around the same time, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. And, um, what I saw was that people and staff who were able to work the council room um, had the most success in terms of getting their policies across the finish line. You never went to council unless you had the votes to win. And so, uh, I will be someone who is proactive about working, uh, the council chambers to make sure we're getting our votes lined up. Um, I think the people who are going to be most successful in this new form of government where each council member is one out of twelve votes, is you're going to have to be kind, you're going to have to be collaborative, and you're going to be have to focus on outcomes. And, you know, there is a time pressure and urgency, but luckily, you know, East Portland will, will be running on four-year terms. So people serving West Portland District One and Inner Southeast Portland District Three, they're only up for an initial two-year term. And so they're going to have even more pressure to deliver results. And, uh, I'm not going to pretend to care that someone in, uh, representing District One is going to care about shade equity in East Portland or so, or the life expectancy in East Portland. But maybe there are things that we can work together on that, uh, achieve, um, multiple outcomes and, um, and, uh, lift multiple boats, I guess. So I'll just kind of say that. I, I just think collaboration and being kind and courteous and honest with the people you're working with is going to get you a long way in this new form of government.
Candace, would you like to go next?
Sure. I, I just really believe this is my strength. I believe this is the value I am bringing to the council is that I have a long track record of working with communities to move an agenda forward. The Charter is a perfect example of that and totally agree with Timor that, you know, you, you need to do the work behind the scenes to ensure that the votes are there. And so I had a lot of FOD dates, I had a lot of coffee dates with my colleagues on the Charter Commission to just talk through, okay, what are the kinks? Like, what are, you know, which form of government are you thinking or what form of voting, right? These were the conversations I was having, building that network, building the relationships. And people trusted me to lead on these issues because they knew that I would always listen to you, that I never pretended to have all the answers, but I always valued everyone's input. And I took that into consideration when I make decisions. I think it's very clear how I make decisions because they, they, they look very much like the culmination of everything I've heard, if that makes sense. So I feel like that's the kind of leadership style I have. And I'm hoping that that is what's going to help us move our agenda forward. And totally agree, kind, collaborative leaders are, are going to be the key in this form of government.
I'll just quickly say that, yeah, absolutely. You know, it has been long clear to me that the way that you are successful in this community with moving public policy is, uh, by the strength of those who are standing right beside you, um, that this is a coalition job. And that people who are, uh, who are good at building coalitions among disparate voices are going to be the ones who are successful in this new ser- season, this new system. Wow. Um, I, I, yeah, I, I think that, um, I have spent a lot of my years working on building coalitions and trying to demonstrate diverse voices working towards a common, uh, set of values. And, um, I'll just leave, I'll just end this by saying, my old boss Nick Fish, you, uh, passed the information or wisdom down to me from his, his family, which was that, uh, the role of a leader is to identify early on, um, what your values are and to write them down if you have to. And to never, ever compromise on anything that is on your values. So that even if you have to disagree with a friend, they won't disa, they won't be able to discount you and you live to fight the next fight. But what that means is that anything that is not on that list and is not written down is up for collabor, is up for, uh, debate, is up for, uh, uh, call it, uh, you know what I'm saying, anyway. Uh, so, um, you have to be willing to work with folks to pivot, to recognize what your, your fifty thousand foot goal is of where you're trying to accomplish and find a path forward. And I think that that is how, um, I have been, I have built my career and what I look forward to, to doing uh, within the next chapter, so, yeah. Compromise was the word I was looking for, compromise.
Yeah, compromise, thank you. It's been a long hour, so I understand, we're losing our words. But thank you so much. I know there's a question raised. Um, I do know you all have websites and emails. We'll make sure to get that out for, um, folks that might still have lingering questions for you. Thank you again for everyone joining. Thank you to the candidates. And as nonprofits, we look forward to working with you if elected. So we're definitely here as a resource and, um, best of luck to you and we'll be in touch. Thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity.